Okay, let's call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Brennan.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Marler.
Here.
Doug Shasso.
Here.
Allison Howe.
She is on personal business.
Clint Anderson.
He is also on personal business.
Lisa Northrup.
She is on vacation.
Kevin Lindell.
I'm here. So, we now have barely a quorum. Okay, first item on our agenda is minutes of the October 16, 2018 council regular meeting. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. A draft copy of those minutes was provided in your packet and is presented for your approval by resolution.
Has everybody that's here had a chance to review the minutes? Are there any corrections or comments? If there are none, I entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would make a resolution that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second. I have a resolution by Dan Marler and a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
Waiting on one vote.
Got to go up one more or down one more. There you go.
That resolution carries on a unanimous vote of four to zero with council members Anderson, Howe, and Northrup absent.
Next item on the agenda is council acting as a zoning board of appeals and a request on a variance for a setback requirement for 410 Maple Street. First off, I will read, this is a public hearing, so please keep the comments to the issues before council. Each speaker is asked to limit comment to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, and not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limited duration of testimony if I determine it necessary in light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. First is the issue of legal notice. Mr. Brennan, has it been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor. Legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on October 18.
Next is presentation of the application by Mr. Gaimeyer.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. What you have in your packet tonight is a request for a variance to the side yard distance to the next dwelling. Mr. Thomason, who's in the audience here tonight, has requested that this board of appeals consider a lesser side setback for a structure that he would like to build on a vacant lot. He will meet all of the required setbacks of his lot. The challenge is that the home that's built next to his future structure is built almost right on the property line, and you know today's standards require that that structure be located five feet off the property line, which would typically give you 10 feet in between structures. And our code requires 10 feet between structures. Mr. Thomason, I think, makes a strong argument to the fact that he's sort of injured by the fact that there's a structure next to him that doesn't meet the current standard, but he's still able to meet the standard on his lot. Staff did look at this in detail according to the criteria. I think we certainly feel that that's a fair argument and a valid request. We did receive several inquiries about this, mostly just in relation to trying to understand what the issue was more than anything. But there was one comment that there's some concern that the 10-foot distance, a lesser 10-foot distance does create a potential fire hazard between structures. That's really the reason for the 10 feet between structures is to try to prevent fires from spreading, you know, throughout the neighborhood. Certainly, we have a number of structures around Fort Morgan that have lesser than 10 feet in between them, primarily because the rules were different back when they were constructed. I think this is a situation that in the future, if the structure to the south would be demolished or otherwise no longer in existence, we would, you know, put the new rules in place and they'd have to be 10, five feet off their side setback that would give you the 10-foot between buildings. I didn't have any specific requests to deny this or any comments that said they didn't support the application, just a lot of questions about that, in particular this 10-foot fire concern. So staff did go through this in detail and would recommend approval of this case. This is case 18-023VA for 410 Maple Street, which is a variance to allow for a lesser distance between dwellings than is required by the code. And that we would, if you do approve this, that you would put the condition that this variance would run in perpetuity with the land and the lot in question. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have of me.
So this is the adjoining property that's out of compliance with the setbacks?
That is correct. It was built in the early 1900s, as I understand it.
Okay. Is this a rear setback or side yard setback?
It's a side yard setback, yep.
And the distance between them will be zero or?
No, it'll be about five and a half feet.
Instead of the 10?
Yeah, this other structure is built practically on the property line. It's inches off.
So is this a home or is this a shed? What?
It's a home.
It's a home.
Yep.
So built soundproof walls?
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Gaimeyer?
How much would you suspect we have of this kind of situation in the city?
Oh, that's a great question. I don't know that I have a good answer to that, Dan, but I would say it's not uncommon in the older parts of town.
Okay, thank you.
I guess my comment would be we got, I know he's not, but the other house is, and, you know, I think we got to do our best to keep the fire from spreading, you know. The other house is built when?
I think it was 1913.
Hmm.
That may be in one of the exhibits in the packet.
So are there other methods of construction that can be done to minimize the spread of fire in a situation like this?
Well, there certainly are. I mean, a lot of times if you have adjoining structures that you want to protect, there are fire-rated walls and various things that can be done to prevent the spread of fire from structure to structure. You know, for instance, in the downtown area, a lot of times structures are attached to each other, so when they get remodeled or rebuilt, we do fire-rated walls through our fire-rated walls in between those structures because there's a zero setback in those instances. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we'll hear comments from the applicant, if any. This applicant wishes to address council. Next is, we'll hear public comments. Is there anybody wishes to speak on this issue? Come to the microphone or podium and sign in to the sheet next to you, please.
I really hate speaking in public, so let's just get this over with.
He'll get used to it.
My name is Susan Brown, and I live at 407 Dual Street. That's directly behind 410 Maple Street and 406 Maple Street. I've lived there since May of 2013. Just like the home mentioned in this request, my home is also built on the zero lot line, which is not very uncommon in older neighborhoods in Fort Morgan. I should know, I'm a realtor in Morgan County. If this variance is approved, the duplex being built at 410 Maple Street would be located only five feet from the home located next door at 406 Maple Street. The dwelling that was located at 410 Maple Street burned down in December of 2013. I remember it well and was terrified that the sparks would set my home on fire. That being said, it's obvious that the distance between the homes, if the distance between the homes wasn't at least 10 feet, we would have lost a few homes that day. There's no reason to put other people's property, lives, and first responders in danger for any financial gain. 406 Maple Street was built in 1913, many years before the five-foot property line setback was required. It should not be the fault of the current owner where the home was built, and they should not be subject to a decrease in their property resale value that approving this variance would do. Not too many people would like to purchase a home with a north-facing bedroom windows looking into the neighbor's windows five feet away. The owner purchased the lot at 410 Maple Street in April of 2016. In every state-approved real estate contract, the potential buyer is given the opportunity to get any inspection they would like, but a specific deadline is also provided for obtaining improvement location certificates or a survey because it's that important. If the property is not agreeable to the buyer, they may leave the contract with no financial The owner had the right not to purchase the property or have a dwelling drawn up to conform to the current code. The home located at 406 Maple Street is grandfathered in. It did not move and is not suddenly encroaching. It's been there since 1913. It is the lot owner's obligation to make sure he can use the property as is before he purchases it. There was no change to the building code since his property was purchased. The plans for the dwelling were drawn up on March 20 of 2016. That's almost one month before the property was even purchased, but there was no survey. So we look at the facts. The owner did purchase a lot zoned R2, which is approved for a single-family home or duplex. He was not frauded or deceived in any way. This was purchased in his free will. The owner can build a single-family home or duplex. No one is stating that he cannot. The owner had the plans drawn up before the purchase of the property, and they failed to discover the setback problem. It is not unreasonable to think that once Mr. Thomason owned the property that he would incur some costs, that include having plans redrawn. The owner failed to do his due diligence in obtaining a survey before purchasing the property, two and a half years prior to the meeting today. None of these conditions mentioned in the application are unique, and none are hindering the use of the land to build a duplex. Approving this variance would provide or would cause financial harm to the neighboring property values. Approving this variance would also possibly set a precedent on how other zero lot line homes are handled, thus financially hurting home values of even more homeowners. Having buildings less than 10 feet apart would cause a serious fire danger, limit the ability of firefighters to save life property, and possibly put them in danger too. So how much is the owner out financially if this is not approved? What's the hardship? Realistically, he can sell the lot for a profit. He would pay for the survey costs, that would pay for the survey costs and more. He would be able to use his blueprint on another property later, so there was no loss there either. And anything, it's unfortunate that the owner purchased a property that he is unable to build the dwelling that he would like. This situation should not be affecting the current neighbor's privacy, their property values, or their safety. I respectfully ask you to deny this variance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to mention one thing. This is the neighbor, this is Amy Payne, the neighbor directly across the street, and I have talked to several people in the neighborhood about it, and they don't agree. Why they didn't show, I don't know, election night.
I have a quick question for you. You said that if the variance was approved, it would adversely affect property values, and how do you figure that?
Well, the home that they're talking about, the 406 Maple, was just recently purchased in the last year. That would, if that building would have been there before then, it wouldn't have been as desirable because five feet looking outside of your north side window, bedroom windows, would be another dwelling looking directly into somebody else's house.
And also, since you lived in the neighborhood, the house that burned down, how far was it from?
It had its 10-foot distance.
The standing one? Pardon me?
It had its 10-foot distance. It was within.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So it was on the adjoining property line?
Huh?
It was on the other property line?
No, it was, I think it was in the middle. There was, didn't look like it was one side or the other.
Okay.
Would you like to respond?
Hold on just a minute. Steve, I have a question for you. So would a single-family home fit on this property without a variance?
Well, I think.
Meet the setback?
I think it's conceivable that you could probably build anything on this lot, you know, smaller duplex units perhaps. I mean, I haven't looked specifically at the size of the lot, but yeah, I'm sure it's conceivable you could put a two-story, single-family home on there, a two-story duplex perhaps of some kind, or some other type of structure on this lot, you know, and require a larger setback that's not currently required by the code in order to meet 10-foot between buildings.
What, on the other side, if there's a, on the other side of the lot, is there the possibility of moving the building the other way? Does that put it within 10 feet of the building on the other lot?
Yeah, I'm not sure that I know that specifically, but you'd have to stay within the rules, which is five feet anyway, unless you granted a lesser side yard setback on the other side.
Right.
So you'd still have to stay within five feet of the existing property line.
Right.
Yeah.
Anybody else have questions for Steve?
Yes, good evening. I'm Greg Thomason. I am the property owner at 410 Maple Street, and I just wanted to set the record straight as far as the chronology that Ms. Brown outlined for you with respect to my purchase of the property in March of 2016. What I actually engaged in was talking to a local contractor about building a duplex. I identified the lot. He came back and informed me that I was required to have five-foot setbacks on either side of my property, and then also outlined the front and back setbacks for the property. It's because he did not identify the 10-foot distance between existing structures or structures in the city that the plans went ahead with that setback in mind. I actually had the plans drafted concurrent to my process, which was probably about a 30-day process in getting the property in my name and buying it. So the two actions were moved forward simultaneous, and that was because at that time I had planned to live in one side of the duplex and then rent the other side, and was desperate to have a place to live here in Fort Morgan. Unfortunately, timing didn't allow me to do that, and so I ended up buying another property over on West Street, which I still live in and own. But the setback issue was not something that my builder brought to my attention as far as the distance between buildings. As far as privacy, there's a hedgerow on that south side of the property, and I would defy anybody, I think there are conifers, ferns, I would defy anybody to be able to see through them winter or spring or summer. And then I would just also offer that, you know, the speculation that the prior house had a 10-foot distance between the existing house on the south side is nothing but conjecture. I can't tell from the pictures that are available of the prior structure whether that is a 10-foot setback or not, or distance between the two structures. That's all I have to say.
You're investing a lot of money into this. Would you, I guess, if there is an increased opportunity or chance of fire and spreading, I guess I'm wondering how you feel about that. That's a lot of money you're investing into an increased chance of fire spreading to your dwelling from something that was built in 1913.
Yes.
I mean, I would be more concerned about that thing going up in flames than a newer structure.
No, that's a good observation, Dan, and I guess I'm willing to take that risk because I feel that, one, housing is in short supply, and this is an opportunity I would like to pursue.
Any other questions, Mr. Thomason? Anything else?
No.
So does, so is this property, sorry, is this property run from the five-foot setback on one side to the five-foot setback on the other?
Yes. Yes, so the lot's only 50 feet wide, and so it was difficult coming up with a design that would fit such a narrow lot. I looked at pre-existing plans of duplexes because that would have been the less expensive way to get an architectural design, and there was nothing that I could locate that would allow me to meet the five-foot setbacks and still squeeze in that lot. So, yes, both sides will be five-foot setback from my property.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. One last time.
I think the situation that we have here is the liability issue is with the contractor, and that's where Mr. Thomason should be seeking his damages from not putting in the neighbor in a position of the value of their home going down. And I, well, he can be comfortable with the fire danger. I don't think it's correct for us to assume that the other parties are, that's all.
But a contractor's going to come in, and they know there's a five-foot, they know the setback from property lines, so I don't know where the contractor would have liabilities on that.
Had a survey been done at the beginning when the property was purchased, this problem would have been identified. That is a deadline in a real estate contract for you to have that option and to get that a deadline, an objection, and an opportunity to leave the contract if it's something that's not right for you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this issue? I'd ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this hearing.
Not through my office, Your Honor.
I will proceed to council discussion. Are there any questions from the council or any discussion on this?
I'm very frustrated, very bothered. It seems like anytime we want, you know, housing is such a big issue in this community. You know, we're so desperate for housing, and it seems like every time we have somebody who comes in and wants to put some housing up, we have issues, and it's frustrating. You know, we don't want this kind of housing in our neighborhood, or, you know, in this case, we, you know, we're concerned about the fire danger, and that's a real concern. I mean, she made some really, really good points. I don't think it's fair to blame the contractor. You know, a builder is going to come in and look at the setbacks. They're not, they're not going to be looking at the effects of other properties. They're going to be looking at their client and who they're trying to serve. So I don't know. I'm interested in other council members' thoughts because I'm really kind of frustrated.
Well, I'm a little concerned about the fire hazards, too. Even though you've met your obligation, I'm just as frustrated with him about that, but I'm more concerned about the safety of our community, our fire department. So I get the fact that we don't have housing here. I get that. I don't know if I can personally bend the rules for that.
I'm trying to see these pictures where. I feel torn about it the same way, but I also look at the other thing as far as, you know, limiting what you can do on your lot if you follow the rules and everything because somebody on another lot is not following the rules, whether it's because they were grandfathered in and built in 1917 or whatever. And I think that, as the mayor had said, you know, if a contractor comes in and says, "This is what you're going to build," he knows the rules are you got to have a five-foot setback. I don't know that he'd really be looking at the others, too. But at the same time, just like you're talking about, there's a reason that we have a five-foot setback. That's so that it ends up in at least 10 feet, be in between buildings, so that if one of them should catch fire, the surrounding buildings are protected, or at least the chances of spreading from building to building are decreased. And we do know there is a risk of fire in that area because we have history to prove it. So it's a real dilemma. Well, and there is a possibility of having, building a single-family home or readdressing your lot line issues to try and get part of the setbacks. I understand you're meeting your five-foot setback. This is something that's going to transpire throughout that area, it sounds like. We have no control over what our forefathers did or were involved in back in the day. They set property lines evidently back in the 1900s. They didn't have setbacks or believe in setbacks. have setbacks or believe in setbacks. Yes, I don't, I'm speculating there, I guess. So... I'm looking at, is there a way that you can redesign a duplex on that lot that would fit? I mean, I...
Well, I think, I think he could. It would just cost him a whole lot more money to go back to the drawing board. Was there a comment about that in the packet?
I didn't see one.
Oh.
And you said it's a 50-foot lot wide?
Which gives him 40 buildable feet, except he's gotta be, so that gives him 35 buildable feet, side to side. See, and it just, it just doesn't seem fair to me that somebody else's property can be affected this way. Just doesn't seem right.
Do you wish to speak to this?
So, yeah, the cost of calculation to architectural design, $20,000 to $35,000. I have another question for Mr. Thompson. Can we bring him back up here, or is it too late for that?
No. Mr. Thompson, you wanna come up and answer a question for Councilman Marler?
So, I'm not understanding your cost calculation that you have in here. Architectural design, $20,000 to $35,000, additional construction costs, which is pretty typical. You're talking about $145 a square foot. What is the loss exactly that you're claiming in your note to council here? Are you saying that...
So, I base...
You're gonna lose $120,000 worth of value? Is that what I'm seeing?
No, it would cost me an additional $120,000 if I went up two stories, as opposed to the nine-foot ceiling basement, finished basement design, one-floor design that I am presenting.
Can you not go deeper onto the property?
Do you mean and avoid that? I don't think I make the back setback.
So, your design is pushing up not only on either side, but in, to the front and back as well?
So, you're saying basically, get past that tip-out that is to the south of me?
Well, from what I understand, you're suggesting that if you can't do this the way that you want to, that it's gonna cost you $120,000 additional cost in order to go up?
Correct.
Okay. What I'm asking is, so, we've determined that you got about 35, 35 feet of buildable space to meet the 10-foot from the other structure and the five-foot from the other side. There's a front setback and a back setback. Are you already on the front and back in your design budding up?
No. I might be able to move the house back just past the tip, what I call a tip-out on the house on the south side.
Okay. And would that eliminate the need to go up on your structure?
Yes.
So, for a redesign of your proposed project, what kind of cost are you looking at?
Well, it would just depend on whether I kept the same concept that I have, and just had an entirely new set of plans made, or if I decided to go up and then narrow the, narrow the overall structure to whatever, you know, whatever requirement I was asked to meet, which could potentially narrow it by another five feet.
So, some of the concerns as well seem to be in regards to, all, the majority of the concerns seems to be with the fire hazard. I guess I'm wondering if you would be open to doing something additional to the building in order to limit that, the spread of that, using different materials or whatever? I don't know.
And I would have to go back to my lender, because my construction loan is already in place. If approved tonight, construction would start next week. Thank you.
So, as Mrs. Brown stated, that you had the opportunity, at the time of purchase, to have the survey and have these addressed. Did you forego that part of the process, or was it something that was not explained to you?
I would say the latter. She's a Realtor, so she knows those rules inside and out. I'm a citizen who is, you know, was at the time trying to find a place to live here in Fort Morgan, and saw duplexes my best opportunity at that time, because the housing inventory that I was looking at didn't suit either what I could afford or what I felt I wanted to move into.
So, did you not use a Realtor when you purchased this?
Yes, I did.
And they didn't afford you that option, or...
I don't recall it ever being stated that I should seek a survey of the lot. We had the, the title company provided us the documentation that we rested on, as far as feeling that everything was in order.
And I think that's very common as well. I mean, didn't we just have a variance not too long ago with that subdivision out by the new hotel? They had some pins that had been misplaced, and they started to see an issue. Then they brought a surveyor in after, and then we had to...
Relocated and corrected them, yeah.
Right. And I think in that case, didn't we, as council, approve a closer-than-10-foot type of situation?
I don't recall.
Well, they were closer to the line, so they wouldn't have the setback. So, if the other one was already put in at their five feet, then and everything, then it wouldn't...
Remember what that was, Jason or Steve?
I think, I think we allowed them to be within the setback, but it was still gonna be 10 feet from the other building.
Yeah.
I believe you're correct.
Yeah.
And to be fair, the setbacks in Riverview Commons are a little bit different than everywhere else, because it's a PUD, as opposed to the rest of the city goes by zoning. So, it's not quite the same down there, but the concept that you described is correct.
That's your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Your Honor, I've got a quick question of Steve that might be helpful, too, with some of the, is our newly adopted code, does that require sprinklers?
Not for residential, or not for single-family and duplex facilities.
Yeah. I couldn't remember.
Any other discussion from council? Okay. If there is no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to close public hearing or continue it.
I move to close public hearing.
Second. I have a motion by Kevin Lindell to close, and a second by Doug Sacheau. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Legal action, Mr. Myers.
All right. So, there's been a lot of testimony and discussion this evening. I wanna make sure council's aware of the legal requirements that you need to address, or provided there in the packet that comes straight from the code, as far as those seven different requirements that you're evaluating. If you believe that those have been met, then you can approve this case. If you believe that they have not been met, or one of them hasn't been met, as applicable, you should deny in that middle ground. If you believe approval is appropriate, and wish to place some sort of conditions on that approval, you can do that as well. And the last option, of course, is do nothing tonight, and you can continue this on if you feel you need any additional information.
Okay. With that, I would entertain a resolution or approval of the variance for setbacks or denial.
I offer a resolution on denial, the request for variance for the setback and requirements for 410 Maple Street.
Have a second?
Second.
I have a resolution by Doug Sacheau, second by Kevin Lindell, for denial of the variance of the setbacks. I'll vote by roll call.
That resolution carries on a vote of three to one, with Councilmember Lindell voting against.
So, what does that mean exactly?
It means the variance was not approved.
It means that he'll have to come up with some other configuration to fit on the lot in order to make it work.
Okay. I was just thinking of a comment the mayor had made earlier in the meeting that, that all four of us had to vote in a big room, something for it to...
That would be in the case of, and I'll let Jason speak to this, as the city attorney, but that's usually the case of an ordinance.
Correct. And it would be, if you were approving this, it would have to be a majority of those present. So, in this case, if you were approving it, you'd need at least three votes to approve passing this. Absent that, absent an approval, a variance doesn't get granted.
Okay. So, the comment was in regards to an...
Ordinance.
Ordinance. All right.
Thank you. If I might make a comment, too, now that we've had the decision on this. Staff does a really good job in putting these cases together, and one of the things that we look at, as far as a public policy perspective, is that we understand that there is a limited amount of housing. And, you know, our direction from council as a whole has been to make sure that we're being developer-friendly, and working as best as we can within the rules to make sure that houses are being built and developments are happening. And so I wanna thank staff for their efforts to try and move forward that policy, and bring forward projects that hopefully can help the community. We completely understand council's decision. It's your decision to make, but just wanna make sure you understand that part of the reason we bring these cases forward is to meet that standard of being developer-friendly, and also providing housing within the community, as part of an overall policy that we believe is what council would like us to do.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. Okay. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for consideration of a variance for a setback requirement at 300 Gateway Avenue. Once again, this is a public hearing. Same rules apply as stated before. First is the issue of the legal notice. Mr. Brennan, has the hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor. Legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on October 18.
Presentation of the application by Mr. Glameyer.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. This item is also a request to a side yard and front yard setback for a structure that's currently under construction at 300 Gateway Avenue. The owner applicant is here tonight, if you have questions of them. You might recall this lot, because we had to come to you for a special use permit, so that they could place a structure, a single-family structure on this lot in this location back in June. They poured the foundation for this structure based on property pins that were located, and then it was determined that those property pins were not in the right spot. We've heard this story before, I think, and this is unfortunate. We've had internal conversations about what to do about this in the future, and I think we're trying to correct this issue. But they've, the owners have spent significant amounts of money on a basement foundation that is in the ground at this point. Certainly, that can be moved, but they did come and request that staff bring forward a variance, because they've already invested, like I say, significant amount of money locating a foundation that is now too close to the road, and also too close to the side yard of the adjacent vacant lot. So, the request tonight is to vary both the front lot setback and the side yard setback, just like the case you had a moment ago. The criteria is in your packet. Staff did review all of that and feels that they do have a case to bring forward to the board tonight, and is recommending approval of this case based on the issue that they've run into. We did have one comment made to our office, and it was from the owner of the adjacent vacant lot. And we are including in this request a variance between building distance setback as well. They would like, at least afforded the opportunity to build a structure on a vacant lot that would be within the setback requirement of five feet, but closer than 10 feet to the soon-to-be-set adjacent structure. In this case, you would have a nine-foot distance between buildings, because the side yard setback is off by a foot. So, both of those issues are before you tonight. Variance request to the existing setbacks of the structure that's being constructed, and a variance to a potentially future constructed home, so that we would have a variance between buildings that would be lesser than 10 feet.
So, is the foundation over by one foot? Is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct. On the side yard and on the front, I forget exactly how close it is to the front lot. But this is not the first time the front yard setback has happened, because if you go over there and look, you'll see there are houses, some that are too close to the front of the road. So, obviously, in the past, when building permits and structures were constructed over there, somebody used an errant property pin to locate those structures. You can easily see that. Some were located properly. So, it's sort of this back and forth. If you go down the road, some of them are too close, some of them are right where they should be. I can't even venture to guess why this has happened in the past, but we are gonna correct it internally. I can promise you that.
Do we have a surveyor in this community?
We do, and that's where we've made that very clear, that we are not locating property pins. We are going to put that burden and owners on the property owner. We are going to put that burden and owners on the property owner. So this is case 18-024 VA. It's a request to vary the lesser side yard and front yard setback and also vary the between-building distance between the vacant lot and the structure at 300 Gateway Avenue. If you do approve this, we would request that you also add the criteria that this, that both variances would run in perpetuity with the land and the lots in question. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about this one.
So this is for two lots?
It's for two lots. The variances are for both lots primarily because of this distance between buildings.
We, as staff, discussed internally whether it would make sense to just grant the variance as it was presented originally, trying to be cognizant of council's time and not have a variance down the road, whether it be a year, two years, five, 10 years, to just resolve the entire issue all at once if possible. That's why you're looking at two within the same application.
That is much appreciated. Seriously.
Yeah. And both...
If it's 10 years, I don't really, wouldn't mind it.
I do, because I wouldn't wish this on...
Yeah. Both property owners are present tonight, the folks that have started construction at 300 Gateway and the folks that own the lot that's vacant currently, if you have questions of them.
So was the construction started prior to knowing where the property pins were? Or the property pins were located and then the lot lines were reestablished after construction?
It's the latter, yeah. They located some pins, determined, you know, based their foundation forms on that.
Isn't it typical that property lots and plats are surveyed by licensed surveyor?
Yeah, and so in this case, there's actually two sets of pins out there. And, you know, I had this conversation with Brent in the office and it was indicated that there was in the past some moving of property pins. The developer didn't really like them out in the middle, so he put them in the back of the sidewalk, and that's not where they belong. But we actually located two sets of pins in this instance. And there's no caps on any of them, it's just rebar hammered in the ground, so it's really difficult to understand which is a pin and which is some kid pounding a piece of rebar in the ground. I'm frustrated as well, by the way.
I can understand. It's not your fault, it's not our fault, but it is a problem in the city. And we've already asked you how many more are out there like this, but we have no idea, do we?
I'm hoping for zero.
Does anybody have any other questions of Mr. Glameyer? Thanks, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
Comments by the applicant? Would you like to address the council?
And we have two applicants, don't we? Yeah. I'd like to hear from the other applicant.
My name is Rex Morse. I work for the company HVS LOB, who's the owner of both of the lots until the one that was sold to Sergio and his wife. So at the time that we sold it, we felt that there was a valid transaction between the two parties and that they were going to build the house that they wanted within all the requirements for approval by the city and so on and so forth, all the building rules, et cetera. Then we got this notice in the mail that they were too close to the property line. We went, well, there went the value of our property because now whoever's going to buy the property from us in the future and possibly build a house, suddenly they, just like the last guy, are too close to the house, to the next of us. We'd like to be supportive of our neighbor here and let them go ahead and finish building the house since they've already got a significant amount of investment in place. But we ask that as a result, that we go ahead and be permitted to have the variance to nine feet instead of the normal 10 for the two properties between the houses. That's my two cents, so to speak. Questions?
You don't have any concern about the fire danger?
You know, in a downtown area, you've got a lot closer structures than 10 feet. Is it an issue? Probably. With building materials these days, I don't know that it's that significant of an issue to cause us to, say to a future owner, that you don't want to build within that six-foot limit in this case. So I guess I would say I'd prefer to have the extra foot for a building structure and take the chance on the fire issue. And it's not, it's not five foot like the last case was. It's getting pretty close to the 10-foot limit.
Is it nine foot on the other, the other lot, the other adjoining lot, or is this a corner lot?
No, it is an interior lot, so on the other side, there's an existing structure and they would be 10 feet in between structures.
So it's just on the one side?
Just be on the one side. That's correct.
Your Honor, if I could provide an interjection, it's just for council's edification and consideration. I know we just had a very similar issue up for council's discussion and consideration on the last case, but each case requires you to make sure that you have findings specific to that case. So if you believe some of the information that was brought up at the previous variance is relevant or otherwise imperative, to make sure that you noted into this one, make sure you do that on the record so that way we complete establishing a complete record if there's an issue moving forward. In other words, don't make assumptions from the last case unless you've told everybody about those in this case.
One of the reasons that we wanted to do the variance tonight was we don't want to have the same situation happen in 10 years or five years when the property's sold and we have to come back and then they tell us denied. We'd like to have this be a uniform decision that affects both of us, one way or the other.
So these are the only two lots that will be impacted on this portion. The rest of them are currently built out, meet the setbacks.
Yeah, I'll get to the podium. That is correct. The rest of the subdivision is built out at this point, so everything else is in conformance.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. So basically, this is only meeting or missing half a foot on each side, pretty much? Or a foot on each side?
It's a foot on one side. Yeah, the other side is in conformance, yeah.
Oh, the other side is 10-foot. One side is only the nine-foot.
Yeah, and then, of course, the front setback needs varied as well because it's too close to the sidewalk, but it's, it just doesn't have the 20-foot required front.
But there's a lot in that neighborhood that have that?
Several in there that are closer than they should be, for whatever reason.
And the owner of the property on the other side is here tonight.
So there is a marked difference under these two, the distance for one. The other one is we found two sets of property pins on the property. Okay. Next, we'll hear public comments. Does anybody else wish to speak to this issue? No one else wishes to speak on the, from the public? I would ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this hearing?
No, Your Honor.
Council discussion, is there any questions or discussion from council?
Kind of like last time, I hate to see somebody that ends up suffering from the mistake or problem from somebody else. Like the last time, I don't have as much a dilemma with the nine-foot versus, you know, five-foot as far as fire safety and everything too. I think that that's probably enough that would make it acceptable, so I feel a lot less conflicted over this. The other thing that I saw in the note and everything too from the first applicant is that they were the ones that realized the mistake and brought it to the attention of the city right away rather than trying to just sweep it under the rug. So I think that also deserves merit.
Well, and they're already under construction when they, what do they have, the basement foundations already poured, right?
Yeah, the entire basement foundation is poured at this point. They did stop because they recognized it had an issue at that point.
Okay.
Well, and I agree, I think nine, nine feet is a palatable amount of distance. And also, there hasn't been anybody speaking against it, which I think is worth noting as well.
Well, to meet the requirements on one side and be minimally short on the other, stop construction and bring it forward is commendable, and that part is out of, out of their control. It's not like they could go back and redesign or come back, they already have structure in the ground, which is a huge cost already. So. Any other discussion or comments from council? If there's no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion to close or continue the public hearing.
I move to close the hearing. Second.
I have a motion about to close by Kevin Lindell, a second by Doug Sashow, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Council action, Mr. Myers?
All right, so council's legal requirements are provided there in the packet. If you feel that the applicant has met those, or applicants in this case, have met those, you should move to approve. You can move to approve with conditions. We would ask that you specify whether this is in perpetuity into forever, which would make the most sense. If you believe that those criteria have not been met, then you should deny the application.
Okay.
And just, Your Honor, Steve, for your records, would it make sense to have two separate motions or one motion granting both?
You know, I don't know that it really affects us one way or the other. We're going to make notes.
I think we'd need for the record, both lots, 300 Gateway and whatever the adjoining lot is, it's going to be, would be included in this.
Yeah.
Just so it is on the record and...
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be two motions for my purposes, and I don't know that the property to the... Is it the north?
It's east and west.
East and west, yeah. Has an address.
It's 300 and 304.
304, okay, that'll help. So if we just say 300 and 304, then that'll be, that's sufficient for my needs.
Does that work, Jason?
Yes.
As long as it's recorded, I'm going to property's on my...
Okay. I would entertain a resolution for acceptance or denial of the variance for setback on 300 and 304 Gateway.
I'd offer a resolution approving case 18-024 VA for 300 Gateway Avenue for a variance to allow for lesser side yard and front yard setback than required by code. Furthermore, a variance for 304 Gateway for lesser minimum side yard distance between dwellings to allow future residents to be constructed with required side yard setback. And that this would run in perpetuity with the land and lots in question.
Second. I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Dan Marler. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Next is presentation and possible action on bids to repair of hail-damaged roofs. Mr. Glameyer?
Okay, thank you. This item in your packet is, once again, another project that when I came was in the works. We had several structures have roof hail damage back in 2015. That's how long we've been dealing with this project. Michael Boyer had put this project out to bid right before I started and awarded a contract to a single bidder. And they were working very, very slowly to get this project completed. We continued to struggle with getting them to come in and complete the work. We found out that they'd actually completed some of the work that was in the county on structures we own without permits and without inspections. We've since had part of one of those roofs come apart in a windstorm because it wasn't inspected and wasn't, you know, constructed properly. So we've since canceled the contract with that contractor, and Jason did a great job of trying to reach out to them and have a conversation about that. We've heard crickets on that issue, so we've just assumed that they are walking away and we're glad to do that as well.
Who was this company?
It was Performance Construction, I believe is the name. Yeah, Performance Construction. They're a front-range company, and they just simply didn't finish the work. They started many, many pieces and parts, and like I say, some of it was done without inspection and without proper permits. So staff went ahead, once we had no correspondence from them on the project, went ahead and rebid the project and did receive three bids. Two of them were qualified. One of the bids simply didn't bid all of the projects, they only bid two out of the 11 projects that we had on the list. So we discounted that one, but we did get what we felt were two very competitive and qualified bids. They're both local companies. Mercer Contracting Services was the low bidder for $39,430. They've done a number of roofs in town, and we're confident they can perform and get this project done there, ready to start.
How much did you say?
It's for $39,430 was what their bid was for. However, because...
The mouse.
Yeah, no, $39,430, I hope is what I said. Because they're picking up work that somebody else has already started, we're not certain that, you know, they can just finish things out. They may need to remove and actually do some other prep work. We're a little concerned about the fire station over on the, at the Burlington facility. I'm not sure that they've done everything proper over there. It was in various stages of repair, so we're asking for a little bit of a contingency on this project just to make sure we can cover any unforeseen things that we may experience as they start to get into this thing. So we're asking for 15% contingency. So we're asking for 15% contingency. That would bring the total award tonight, if you so choose, to $45,345. We did discuss that briefly with them, and I think we can meet the project within those boundaries. I hope we don't have to use any of that, and we'll certainly strive not to. But we certainly have the insurance money. This was a SIRSAC claim, and they did pay the claim. And I'm not sure that we paid anything to Performance Construction. I could not find any invoices. So I think we've got certainly the money to take care of this project. And it's well under the insurance claim, so. Be happy to answer any questions you might have on this one.
Anybody have any questions? If there are none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution that we accept the bid from Mercer Contracting Services in the amount of $45,345, which includes a 15% contingency to complete the 2015 hail damaged roof repairs project.
Second. A resolution by Dan Marler, a second by Kevin Lindle. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Next is presentation and possible action approving an easement agreement with ALO Communications. Mr. Nation.
Good evening, everybody. I don't have any setbacks or anything to discuss with you tonight, so we'll try to make this quick. This is the last piece of kind of cleanup work that we have with ALO. When we originally started our fiber project and we were still looking at doing things ourselves, the city was contemplating putting our control office, or CO as they abbreviate it, which is where all the controlling hardware goes, into the police department. So we had our backbone and everything run to the police department, and we were looking at utilizing part of that basement space for that. When we decided to go and look at bringing in a company to run the system, we decided that we didn't really want to be giving access to an outside party, to our police department. And so we had discussions with ALO. Once we selected them on what would work best, they agreed that placing it next to the police department would work because that's where everything was going to physically in the ground. And so we allocated some space to them over on the east side of the building. That CO building, I think if you've seen it over there, it's only about 140 square feet. It's not a very big building. It does have a generator on it and everything. So once we got it located, we determined what area they would need for the CO to sit on, enough space for parking, so when they have vehicles in there doing any type of maintenance, there's room. And so, so what you have in front of you tonight is kind of the culmination of that. It allows ALO to have access because that is a piece of city-owned property. So we're granting, we want to grant them an easement to have their facilities located on that. And so this will be kind of, I think, the last thing that I'll need to bring in front of you for the fiber project before its completion. So, so I'd be happy to answer any questions about the agreement.
Any questions?
I did. I, one other thing I would like to add, I did get asked by one of the staff members about how they get back into that. And we located it right along what will be an extension of Linda Street when Center Point develops out. So they won't be winding across parts of our private property. That's actually a road right away in there that they're driving across right now to get to it. And so eventually, when we extend that road back in there, they'll just have a paved road that goes right by it. And so it'll not look like they're driving through the weeds.
I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an easement agreement with ALO Communications LLC.
Second. I have a resolution by Kevin Lindle, a second by Dan Marler. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Brent. Next is presentation on a request for approval to purchase an asphalt zipper machine. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, your honor. I've got some helpers here tonight to help me out with this. This is a really good opportunity for the city of Fort Morgan. You know, one of the focuses that we've had and have been, you know, really supported by the citizens is to make sure that we are taking care of our streets that need to be upgraded and fixed. And I want to thank staff for taking time to find ways to do it more efficiently, faster and quicker by looking at their various needs for equipment. So I'm going to turn the time over a little bit to Steve and then also JW to kind of explain what this is and why it's going to be helpful for the city. And I just want you to know, I support this purchase as they presented it to me because I think it's going to be a huge savings and value to the city, so.
Okay, thanks. So this, I've included several things in your packet, a brochure that talks about this piece of equipment, shows its use, what it can be used for, a letter that talks about sole source, why this is sort of unique, and it's hard to find competitive bids and, and products for this type of machinery, and a couple of price quotes. And this came to my attention late this year that, you know, we'd looked at this piece of equipment before. Brad had had this demonstrated in the community, liked it a lot. It's kind of an expensive piece of machinery. I think we were, we were a little hesitant to act on it because of the value. These folks came back out and brought the asphalt zipper back out, and, and I saw it in action. JW and the crew, we actually used it to fix a little bump we had over on Railroad Avenue where the asphalt meets up with the concrete. Ron, I think you brought this to my attention. And we have those types of things occur in town. When we have to do that in-house, it takes us better part of a day to fix those. I watched him fix that one on Railroad in 15 minutes. It was pretty impressive to see that happen. This year, when we were doing the work on Railroad Avenue, you'll, they had to prep for the water line replacement. And so we had to bring in a rather large piece of equipment to cut that trench out and took several days to get that done. And so this piece of equipment sort of takes the place of a lot of those types of things that we've been doing in the past. We can do those in-house, save time, save money, save contracted labor. And it also allows us to save time and money on just patching, repairing alligatored areas of roads where we have to come in and physically saw cut those, peel the asphalt out, haul that asphalt away, bring new asphalt in. We can actually grind this asphalt up. We use the grindings in our alleys and various other gravel places and then, and then just patch those back. It, it does save a significant amount of time. What I wasn't aware of that's in your memo is the price difference that's about to occur on this machine. The EPA has enacted new emission standards on many, many pieces of equipment, not just this one, but diesel engines in general. And that's set to take effect on January 1. And the folks at Asphalt Zipper brought that to my attention, said we have a few of these. We will not be able to sell them after the first of the year because they'll be out of compliance. And the price difference for the new machine in 2019 versus the one we have is $77,335, and that was a pretty significant price difference. So I talked to Jeff about this issue and said, you know, this is significant. This is real money. And if we want to act on one of these machines now, this is the time. We can sign the, the quote that we've been provided and take delivery of this machine next year and, and save Fort Morgan almost $70, $78,000 on a machine that I think we're going to end up buying in the future anyway. And so I thought it was appropriate to at least come and ask, and hopefully you'll consider that tonight. JW is here. He can talk a lot about where he would use this. I would also say that there's value for this, at least initially at the golf course. Ty's talked to me about grinding some of the cart paths up there, kind of taking them back to gravel. This does all of that in one shot. You grind it, you blade it, and you're done. You walk away, and it's a gravel cart path again. You know, we tried to find places to rent these, and nobody rents them. It's cities that are buying these, and they don't rent them out to other cities. They use them. So, you know, we initially talked about doing that at the golf course, but I simply couldn't find one to rent to, to do that. So we would use it there. Certainly a short time use, but I know JW'd use the heck out of this thing. So I don't know if you want to come up and talk a little bit about that?
Is this similar to what they used on Barlow Road when they had all the alligatoring and down on there? Was that just that cutter?
Oh, on the concrete? Yeah, that was where they, actually, it was a drum that had a whole bunch of saw blades mounted onto it, and that was just like a laser level on that. This is quite a bit different than that. So, kind of hard to follow Steve, what he said. That's about everything that I had to say for it, too.
I'd like to comment that when he was walking up and you were talking about this, he looked like the proverbial kid coming to Christmas. You know, and he's just like all his stores. He's getting ready for Christmas early.
Yeah, I just got to find a tree big enough to put this under. But we would be able to utilize this piece of machinery, especially for the water department. They, you know, they wouldn't have to incorporate this into their bid specs anymore. We'd be able to do it all in-house, which would, usually, it's running about $3 to $5 a square yard to rotor mill the centers of the streets and stuff out, so. And then that's not to mention the mobilization fee that they charged to bring it in as well. So it's, you know, not a, a big savings on that, but over time, it's going to pay for itself, just in that alone. There's other things that we can use it for. Like Steve mentioned, when Brad was here, we brought it in two, three years ago. And we done a seam joint that was falling apart over on Alpine in Landmark Trailer Park. And we were able to rotor mill that down. We didn't even have to go down to base. We just rotor milled out about three inches. So it kept a good asphalt base underneath of us, and we were able to patch that back in at half the cost of what it would cost to tear the whole thing out and try to restabilize, so. And Landmark alone's got quite a few areas that we'd be able to use that in. At that time, we were kind of throwing it around, you know, is it a need or is it just a want? But during this couple of years, I've been driving around town thinking, boy, I could use it there. I could really use it there. You know, we could grind next to the curb lines over here and fix this up. So it, it's kind of proven to me that we've got quite a few areas that we could use this in, and it would be very effective, so.
Especially now that you've got a little bit bigger budget for the, with the streets.
Right.
Particularly for streets.
Mm-hmm. And it'd be my hope that we could take a street that looks like it's, you know, it needs a rebuild. It needs, you know, it's just completely wasted. But if we can patch a few areas in with this machine and put a chip over it, we may get another six years out of this street, so.
And you're looking at the 48-inch?
Yes.
So I've noticed at times, generally in the spring, there are patches of street that get kind of rotor milled up, and then nothing happens on them for like months until things come along. You're not going to go crazy on us and start rotor milling streets all over and leave them sitting there for months?
No, no, we wouldn't at all. If areas that, that the water department could, you know, if they got main breaks or something like that that come across, you know, definitely the, the millings that this product, this machine would produce, we'd be able to use that kind of stuff to patch these holes in as a temporary basis until the asphalt plants opened up and stuff to where we could, you know, get it patched in right, so. But we wouldn't go through and prep, I guess you'd say, for, yeah, for later on work. We'd, we'd wait till asphalt plants are opened up and probably do the whole process in one day.
So is that, is that, you know, I was joking, but is that kind of connected to this and like having our own? Because there were stretches where there were like a month where it was just a, just a rototilled, and nobody would get out there and get to the work.
Is it like in, on the rebuild parts or main replacements and...
Thinking off of, south of Maine by the elementary school, there was a stretch there for a while. This was a while back, but...
Right.
I mean, was that, were those areas rototilled and not gotten to because, was it related to our not having one of these machines?
They may have been milled up for work, like the water main replacements, and then just taken a while for the contractor to get back in and actually put it, you know, top them off.
Okay, so is this alleviates those kind of situations?
I don't know if it would alleviate those situations, no, because a lot of them have, when you get that going, and then like if the asphalt plants aren't open up or they're not producing right now, or it takes a while for the companies to get there. Those are probably contracted out to have them, that work done. And if we're doing it ourselves, we got an asphalt truck right behind us doing it, so.
So do these come with the side shift and the tilt, or is that an additional?
Uh, this one...
Part of it, do you know?
Ask that question again, Ron.
The side shift and the tilt capabilities of it, is that part of the package or are those addition?
To my knowledge, the side shift would be pretty much positioning on the loader bucket where you would put it. So that way, you could put it on the edge of the bucket, and you could get right up to the edge of the, of the concrete if you needed to.
Well, this looks as though it's got a rail system that fits on there. It's up to 36-inch side shift and a nine-inch tilt.
Yep.
So I mean, it would have to be...
So they, they get that, this, this model?
I was just curious if this...
Yeah, I'm just looking at the option list. I'll confirm that.
Was that on this one or is that on the other one?
Yeah, it's a good question. It doesn't say specifically in the package, but I'll, I'll ask.
Yeah, I just saw it. I was...
I think the guy that demonstrated it for us, I think he, he mentioned that it would have that, that capability if we needed to.
Another automatic side shift would be...
Yeah.
Pretty convenient and connect it, disconnect it, move it.
Yep, yep, it would.
Where's, where's the money coming up, coming for this?
So our intent was to take this out of the, the $900,000 that's normally budgeted for just street maintenance in general. We can take that opportunity now and, you know, sign, sign this, but it would actually be paid out in next year's budget out of that $900,000. We, this year, we spent that $900,000 on this process. We just used a contractor to do it. So now we'll be doing it in-house, so.
We're basically signing the contract 2018 to get it rolling, pay for it.
In 2019.
Because after 2019, the new emissions come into effect for diesels.
Yeah, we just want to lock the machine in that's available and not have to pay $77,000 more next year. But it comes out of that street maintenance budget in the capital fund.
Well, do we want a machine that's going to be polluting the environment?
Yep.
Always.
Oh, yes, we do.
It's too cold. We want a little warming. That was a joke. So. Any other questions? Comments? If there are none, I would entertain action or a resolution to approve the purchase.
Your honor, for a resolution that we approve to sign the 2018 quote for the asphalt zipper, to take delivery in 2019, and to make payment for the machine out of the 2019 budget.
Second. I have a resolution by Dan Marler, a second by Kevin Lindle. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Merry Christmas, JW.
Thank you very much.
Next is 2019 budget calendar and a second reading and public hearing of the final action on the budget. So this is a public hearing on the annual appropriation ordinance levying a tax on taxable property in the city of Fort Morgan, Colorado, and appropriations of the monies to the several funds of the said city. This is a public hearing. Please keep comments to issues before the city council. Each speaker is asked to limit comment time to three minutes unless speaker represents a group of citizens, which event additional time will be allocated. Please respect these limitations. As I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper, I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, and not pertinent to the issues, and set a limit on the time duration of testimony if I deem it necessary in light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. First is the, the issue of a le, of legal notice. Mr. Brennan was a par, property... Mr. Brennan, was it properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor. Legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on October 19.
Next is a presentation of the ordinance, says Mr. Glamire on mine.
Really? Oh, that must be on your agenda or the script? Probably on the script.
Yeah.
Mr. Wells.
So, basically, this is what was presented to council at the last and first reading of the ordinance. There's only one minor modification with that, and that is related to the pump station that needs to be built around Fort Lupton for increasing the capacity of the CBT line that goes to the water plant in Wiggins. We got notice that this was coming up, and we know, after the first reading of the ordinance, Brent was at a meeting and was told that we need to come up with $500,000 so they can get everything ready towards the tail end of 2019 so that construction can happen in 2020. So, we were past the bill because everybody around the room looked at us and said, well, you're the one that's doing this. So, we do have money in the reserve account of the water department. It's something we know we have to build and something that has to be done, and we're just making a modification and having that being allowed in the 2019 budget. So, that would be the only change to the budget ordinance as presented. So, we'll have to publish it in full one more time with that minor modification.
Okay. And that's the only change?
That's the only change, yep.
And that's the one that eliminates the bottleneck in our pipeline? Next, public comment. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I would ask the clerk if there was any written, submitted, written or oral comments submitted to your office prior to this hearing?
No, Your Honor.
Counsel discussion, is there any questions or discussion by counsel? If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to close and/or continue the public hearing.
So moved to close?
Second. Have a motion by Doug Sasha, a second by Kevin Lindell, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Mr. Martin.
All right, so because this is an ordinance, as we discussed briefly earlier, especially as it affects financials, it requires a majority of council as a whole to pass the ordinance on second reading. If you choose not to, that's your prerogative. Just as a friendly reminder, the charter as well as state statute does require the city to have a budget, but ultimately, if this isn't the budget you want, you could vote to not approve it or vote to approve it.
I would entertain a resolution approving the ordinance on second reading.
Offer a resolution approving the second and final reading of ordinance number 1222, the annual appropriation ordinance leveling the tax on the taxable property of the city of Fort Morgan and appropriate monies to the, to the several funds of said city.
Have a resolution by Doug Sasha, a second by Kevin Lindell, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is public comment and audience participation for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Susan, Anella? Reports by officials or staff.
Yes, Your Honor. First of all, I'd like to just thank all of staff and council for all the hard work that you did when I was on leave. Want to thank staff for keeping things together, and I think we've got a great, great path ahead of us. It's looking really good, and really appreciate the welcome back. I'd also like to make kudos on the budget. Council just, I missed all the heartache and, and brain cell damage and everything else that goes along with that, but really appreciate council and staff getting that completed. I was at a meeting today and learned that there are other communities which I won't name and embarrass tonight that still are working on their budget and figuring out how they're going to make things work, and I think it says a lot about our managers and council that we get this thing done when we do, so I want to thank staff for all their hard work on that as well. I know some of the directors have some announcements that they'd like to share before the chief gets up and does his. One of the things that I was contacted by a citizen about, about a week or a week and a half ago, was there's been a lot of discussion on radio and news about drug take-back days, and wanted to know when the city of Fort Morgan's going to do their drug take-back day, and the answer is we have drug take-back day every day, 24/7, 365 days a year. We have the Green Drug Drop Box. I'm sure it's got a different name, but that just sounds cool, over in the police department, which was established with Roger Dahl before he moved over to the county, and you can go in there any time of the day.
Jeff, it's, it's business hours.
So, is it just business hours?
Not 24/7.
It's not 24/7?
Well, we prefer business hours.
We prefer business hours. We prefer business hours, but if you're in an emergency and it's 2:00 in the morning, you don't know where to put your drugs, they'll let you in at the front door. Just ring the doorbell.
Stick them in the glove box, they'll get them sooner or later.
That's right. But no, we want the public to know that that service is available, because there are a lot of unwanted prescription drugs that people, you know, maybe a loved one passes. I know that, that's been a situation in my life, or you have, you know, you have all this leftover stuff you just don't need anymore, and we really don't want you to flush it. That really messes up our system, and this is a very safe way to take those back, and so.
How confidential is that process?
Very, very confidential. You just dump your stuff into a baggie and drop it off. I guess if you want to leave them in the bottles, you can, but I think, but we suggest you put them in a Ziploc bag. You don't even have to sort them. Just put it all in one bag and drop it in there, and then we package it up and send it off for appropriate disposal. So, we encourage everybody to do that. Want to thank the police department and Roger, who put all the, put a lot of work into making that happen, so.
Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm up here tonight to report some good news. We received notification last week that the police department has been accredited by the Colorado Association Chiefs of Police, and what that means is that we are in compliance with approximately 186 professional standards set forth by the Police Chiefs Association. Took us about a year and a half to do this. We were at one time accredited. That accreditation had lapsed, and we recognized that it was important to become re-accredited. So, we've been working on it for a long time. Commander Crone was our accreditation manager, and he did an excellent job on this, but this involved many departments in the city, the city attorney's office, the city manager's office. There were lots of moving parts to this to make sure that we were accredited, and I'm proud to report that we are the only accredited law enforcement agency in northeast Colorado. So, we're very excited about that, and we are the 38th police department in the state of Colorado to be accredited. This accreditation is good for five years, and we're hoping that it won't lapse in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'd like to make a comment. City council made it through the entire meeting without any other women. We did all of the resolutions and everything else. Good job, guys.
I thought maybe we were going to go without a resolution all night. I'm glad somebody did, or it would have been a long, unproductive evening. So.
Let them fly.
Any other reports?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Council? No. Bids, meetings, and announcements. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city is accepting sealed bids for hole signs for Quail Dunes Golf Course until 3:00 PM on November 14th. Sealed proposals for repair of hail-damaged city vehicles until 4:00 PM on Friday, November Sealed proposals for the wastewater treatment plant for mechanical bar screen procurement until 3:00 PM on November 27th, and qualifications and proposals to prepare a city campus complex master plan and facilities design until 3:00 PM on December 3rd. Under meetings, city offices will be closed next Monday, the 12th, for Veterans Day. On November 13th at 1:30 PM, the senior center advisory board meets at the senior center. On November 14th at noon, the airport advisory board meets at the airport, and on November 19th at 4:30 PM, the library advisory board meets in the community room. The next city council regular meeting will be 6:00 PM on November 20th, and just looking ahead past that, all city offices will be closed on November 22nd and 23rd for Thanksgiving holidays.
Next on the agenda is an executive session for discussion of a personal matter under CRS Section 24-6-4024F, not involving any specific employee. Who requested discussion of a matter in open session? Any member of this body or any elected official? The appointment of any person to fill an office of this body of, or of an elected official, or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees, and for the following additional details are provided for identification purposes city attorney's contract. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Kevin Lindell, a second by Dan Marler, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We'll retire to executive session.